Okay, on with the show. Thank you, people. I thank you, everybody, for joining us today for our second webinar as part of the Transition to Work 2020: Employment Preparation Webinars for Persons with Disabilities. We have a diverse group of people listening in today, which includes students from Humber, students from the University of Guelph, Humber, students from different institutions, faculty and staff from different institutions, as well as individuals from the community. Thank you again for joining us today. These webinars are presented on behalf of the Transition to Work Committee in honor of December 3rd, International Day of Persons with Disabilities. So just a reminder, if you're joining in for the first time today and you require an American Sign Language interpreter for today's session, please open the Zoom link in the chat box to the right. If you do so, make sure your video and microphone are turned off in Microsoft Teams before you join Zoom. And again, you would be, if you're using an ASL interpreter, you'll be accessing today's webinar with two platforms open at the same time. The PowerPoint slides will be available through Microsoft Teams, and your ASL interpreter, you'll see them through Zoom. Thank you again for interpreters for your dedication to this event today. So a couple of other reminders before we get started. This might be another reminder, if you were listening in this morning, that these workshops will be recorded. So if you do not want to appear in the recording, you can just turn off your microphone and your camera. If you are interested in accessing auto captioning, once again, you'll notice at the top of your screen there are a bunch of symbols, including the three dots. So if you click on the three dots, a dropdown menu should appear, and there will be a button that says CC, Turn on Live Captionings, and you will see the captionings at the bottom of the screen in real time. Our speaker today is very happy for you to ask questions throughout the event, although we will devote a couple of minutes towards the end of the webinar for more detailed discussions. You can ask questions in many ways. You can use the raise hand feature, which again is listed at the top of the screen, or you could type your question in the chat box, and one of the Transition to Work Committee members will politely interrupt the speaker and say the question out loud. Stay tuned, stay engaged till the end of the webinar, where you could claim this through on your co-curricular record. I'll give some instructions towards the end, as well as I'll give some instructions on collecting your feedback about this one webinar today. So again, thank you for tuning in. Okay, so on this note, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and I'm going to allow our next speaker, Mr. Kevin Wilson, to share his screen and give an introduction before we kick off that webinar.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Just give me a sec.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so while we're getting this set up, I would like to introduce Kevin Wilson from Abilities to Work. Kevin, thank you for joining us today. For those who don't know Kevin, he's the Executive Director for Abilities to Work, which was formerly known as the Coalition for Persons with Disabilities. This is a nonprofit organization that supports people with accessibility needs to find opportunities in employment, education, and training. For over 25 years, the organization has supported all disability types and career aspirations, mostly in the PEO region, but also across the GTA. Its focus is to eliminate barriers through building understanding and knowledge for individuals and organizations. Kevin has spent a number of years supporting differently-abled persons across different environments and situations, and he's very passionate about ensuring that everybody gets the opportunity to show their value, which is not always easy in a world where conformity rules. As a person with invisible disabilities himself, Kevin is very familiar with the challenges this can bring at work and at home, and he's very happy to share some information with you. Kevin, thank you so much for joining us today. You're onstage until 12:45, so I'll just turn it over to you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jeff, and thanks for having me, everyone. It's an absolute pleasure for me to be here today. I'm also very conscious of the fact that I get this lot at lunchtime, so I may not have everyone's attention right now, including my own, which is okay. So as Jeff mentioned, if you have any questions, feel free to ask them. I'll introduce a few pauses as well to give people a chance to ask anything. And for me, sometimes I speak a little quickly, so if I need to slow down, let someone know, and I'll be happy to do that, especially for the ASL interpreter. So with that, I'll start it. So today, invisible disabilities and how they occur in the workplace or how they present in the workplace, what that means. And that's a very complicated area, but I'll try to sort of break it down as easily as I can. The learning outcomes, first of all, I want to sort of speak a little bit about disabilities in Ontario. So we'll get to know what invisible disabilities are, and let's see if we can identify some of the challenges and solutions, because this is something that my organization deals with on a daily basis. So a little bit about us, first of all. The organization that I have the absolute privilege to lead was formed as a coalition of community groups, employers, people in 1985, because at that time, they identified a gap for people with disabilities. There just wasn't enough support out there. So the organization started, and then 10 years later, became a not-for-profit in 1995, which we still are today. And we focus on people's career paths, and we're funded by the provincial and the federal government through different programs to actually support persons with disabilities in finding those opportunities to help them on their careers. And it's complex, and it's fun, and it's challenging, and you have to think outside the box. But it's what we do makes a difference in people's lives. And we provide information to community groups, employers. We teach employers how to be more accessible. We help people realize their value and help them go for that. So we do a lot. So we're actually currently transitioning to a new name, and obviously, our name is from the 1980s. And we're not really a coalition anymore. We're about accessibility. So we're changing our name at the minute to Abilities to Work, because we want to focus on what people can do and not what society tells them they can't. And we do place people, we help people start their own businesses, as well as steer people into education, whether that be short certificates or gap training, right up to certificates, diplomas, and degrees. We provide this sort of an overview of what we do. So for employers, we conduct audits of organizations, and we do that in a way that's slightly different. I mean, there's lots of organizations out there that can do this, but we look at it from a functional perspective. So it's not just, do you meet code? It's will your processes and environment actually be conducive to being accessible? And then we also provide accessibility education for organizations, because a lot of people don't know, and we help close those gaps. We also do a lot of our presentations for community agencies and accessibility education for community agencies. And we work with all organizations across the GTA. I mean, although we're focused in PEO, we do work with people as far across as Scarborough, to the east, to Niagara on the left, as far north as Shelburne, and also over to Guelph, Kitchener. So we sort of, we support where we're needed. We are an Employment Ontario service provider and ODSP service provider, and those are programs that the province runs, that we're funded under, as well as the Government of Canada, the Opportunities Fund, which the federal government made an announcement a couple of days ago about extending that. And so we're part of that as well. But where other organizations do all sorts of different things, we focus on persons with disabilities. So we have three offices, Mississauga, Brampton, and Orangeville. In Mississauga, we're the sort of the bright green building, which is just north of the 403 on Highway 10. In Brampton, we're in the same plaza as Longgoes and the Community Door and the Canadian Mental Health Association. And then in Orangeville, we're sort of in a prime location as well, where people can find us easily. We have around 30 staff, and this is another important thing for us. For us, we don't focus on any one particular disability. We look at, we deal with people of all different skill levels, background, disability types, and even in education, from high school right up to PhD. For us, it's about finding the right place for the right person at the right time. And we obviously connect with other community agencies, and because this job is only one part of a person's life, right? So we want to make sure that people have the right medical support if they need it, or they have a roof over their head, or food security. Those are important elements without which a person, it's going to slow them down in terms of their ability to succeed in a workplace. So a bit about me, so Jeff mentioned a bit there from the sort of the little bio piece. So I'm the Executive Director, which means I look after the day-to-day running of the organization, and I report to a board of volunteers who help me with expertise, with guidance, with strategy. So that, and those are community members who do this for free. And they basically help us keep on the right track, and that's part of a non-government governance, which is the board to help steer things. I actually spent over 20 years in post-secondary education, and I was just having a conversation with someone a couple of minutes ago. We know each other from my previous life. So I've worked for, prior to, sorry, prior to Humber. I was at Humber a few times for basketball, as a spectator. But I worked for Sheridan College for a few years, the University of Toronto and York University. So I spent most of my life in post-secondary education before moving over to the nonprofit world. And a lot of that time was spent supporting students in accessible learning. So I have a lot of experience in the world of accessibility. I actually trained as a microbiologist, which is a bit weird. I did medical research, and obviously, in the past year, my background has sort of come back to me a little bit, remembering things I thought I'd forgotten. And the reason why I changed is sort of influenced by this next piece, which is I have ADHD, and it co-occurs with anxiety and depression, which is very common. And that links back to my microbiology background, because I wasn't very happy working in a lab, as interesting as it was, because I was doing the same things all day, every day, and I just felt that I couldn't do it. At that time, I had no idea that I had ADHD. I was only diagnosed in my 40s, which was very relieving, frustrating, disappointing, exciting, all at the same time. And I'm still trying to get to know myself that way and learn what I'm good at and what I'm not. But for me, I'm at a point now where I'm comfortable disclosing that. The first few years, I wasn't. I was very, I was going through a lot of the same fears that most people would do, that what do I say, what do I not say? Is that going to hurt me? Is that going to help me? But for me, at the point, I think it's important for people to know, because it is who I am. And for me, I don't see that as any type of deficit. I like that title. For me, that's, part of that is my superpower, because I can do some things really, really awesomely, not so good as other things, but that's okay. So for me, I'm actually happy to disclose that, because it's important. Then let's move on. What is a disability, anyway? Because, you know, do we know? Do we not know? What does it mean? So I thought I would dig into some definitions for you. And the first one comes in the word health organization. And I'm not going to read it all through for you. The other thing as well is, these slides are going to be available for people afterwards, so you don't need to try to write anything down or take notes, because I'm going to show some data as well. So just don't worry about it. It will be available for you whenever, to see you later. For this, what I wanted to draw attention to was the, I actually don't like this definition, because it just highlights negative. It doesn't speak to the positive of someone's contributions or their abilities. But that's the word health organization definition of what a disability is. So don't really like that one too much. So in Canada, we have different, obviously, because of the way our political system is set up, we have things at municipal, we have provincial, we have federal, territorial. So in Canada, this is from the Canadian Human Rights Act, which is a better definition compared to the word health organization, because it speaks a little more about the complexities of what a disability is. And that's sort of, but that only covers the federal world, which is not the same as the provincial world. Now, when we get into Ontario, we have a piece of legislation, which was mentioned earlier, called the Ontario Human Rights Code. And disability is a protected ground, which means that you can't discriminate against someone because of their disability. And for disability in Ontario, there's even more detail. Okay. And it's very, very broad, but it should be, because we're all different, right? And what we can and can't do is really dependent on ourselves. So we're different. So it's quite complex. But the key part of this is that, in the Human Rights Code, is that it's not consistent, right? I mean, it can come and it can go, it can be, it can change, because when we're born, things happen, as we grow up, or things can get better or worse, depending on the situation. And the Human Rights Code in Ontario tries to capture that, because it is not, it's not a simple thing to try to define. Now, this is another little piece, which is interesting, which is the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities, which started in 2006. And that's when a lot of countries got together and said, "We really got to do something about this." And Canada did sign up to it for part of it, and it's also the driver of some legislation. But it was a recognition that across the world, there are an awful lot of people who would fall into the category of disabilities. But how their life happens and how they're treated is not consistent and not always good, not always bad. But the United Nations got together to try to do something about that and encourage discussion and practice change across the world. So for me, when I'm looking at all these definitions, it's about, how do we take such a complex definition and people's human experience and keep it simple? And sort of, for me, it comes down to two things. And when we work with clients on a daily basis, we try to keep these things in mind. One, we are all different. It's simple as that. So our experience, my experience is not the same as your experience's, same as anyone's experience. And even if we grew up in the same family, same house, same community, country, we're not all the same, and that's okay. The other thing is we all have value, and I think sometimes that gets missed. That we think and we try to focus on the dis-word, the disability, which is not looking at, it's not a strength-based approach. But we have to think of that. Everyone has value. And there's a guy who started a company called Kinko's in the United States, which is a very big copy organization. And Paul Olafalea, I hope I pronounced that correctly. And he has ADHD, and over the years, he's been interviewed. And he left school when he was 15 or something like that, because he wasn't accommodated. He wouldn't have been at that time, anyway. But it wasn't for him. But he left, and he went, and he started a very successful company. And he said, "You only have to be good at one thing." And for us, that's part of it, right? Let's find our talent, because we don't always know. And let's use it to the best of our abilities. And that's what we have to do. I mean, it took me a long time to find mine. Some people are faster, some people are slower. That's okay, too, right? But at the end of the day, that's what we should be really focusing on. What can we really do and do a good job at, no matter what that is? And that'll change over time, too. So any questions so far? So I can't see anything in the screen other than my presentation. So Kasia, if there's anything there, can you let me know?
Absolutely. Thanks, Kevin. During the definitions, Gosha had a question. For the disability to be recognized at work, does it have to be formally diagnosed?
No, it doesn't. And in fact, the Human Rights, there was a change in the Human Rights Code in 2016 that basically, and this was a case, actually, it was involving York University. And it's not because York were doing anything wrong. It's just because that was the mechanism it went through, which basically removed the right for employers to get a diagnosis to accommodate someone. And it basically comes down to functional limitations, which is because the diagnosis really doesn't matter at the end of the day. It's how your condition impacts you in the workplace. So the only time that an employer is really entitled to a definition or a diagnosis is if the complexities are such or the needs are such that a diagnosis would actually help in the accommodation process, then that's okay. But for the vast majority of disabilities, you don't need it. You really don't, and they're not entitled to it. So it's, and the Commission has been very clear on that.
And the last question, Gosha asked, "Is there any organization out there that helps to find the youth with ADHD their strengths?"
So that's a very, very broad question, sort of, and it depends what you mean. So there are many ways you can do this. So for example, in, one of the tools that's used for youth, it's called a psychoeducational assessment. And it's used, anyone can do that. And it's sort of a two-day set of tests that go through all your different cognitive functions. And it's done by a psychologist, and a psychologist who has experience and training in this type of testing. So I've actually, I've had one of those done. So it tells me what I'm good at and what I'm not good at. And they use it in schools to help develop education plans for children. Now, they're very, very expensive. That's the problem. So when you're in the school, public school system, you can get them done if you're identified, but you may have to wait a couple of years. You can get them done privately, but they're like $2,500. If you have an employer with benefits, they usually cover a fair amount of that. Sometimes all, it depends. But that's a really, really good way to figure out what you're really, 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 really good at. But at the end of the day, it's no, there's no, I guess, there's no better way to do that than the person themselves. So when clients come to see us, for example, we run through a detailed assessment and interview to figure out, and the limitations, to figure out what people are really, really good at or they're not so good at, because you're the only person who can really tell that. So we try to work with that to figure out how that will work in a particular workplace and whether that's a good fit or a bad fit, or what can we do to tweak that. So does that help? I know it's a very, it's a very broad area, and there's lots of different ways to do it.
Okay, so Gosha said, "Thank you." Does that mean that I can refuse when the employer asks me for doctor's notes?
So it, but a doctor's note will not, should not contain a diagnosis. If you, I mean, if you're off sick, for example. And there's different policies and different employers. So if we go back to the Human Rights Code again, basically, doctor's notes should only be used, they're not, it shouldn't be, "Oh, I had a cold. Get me a doctor's note." No, you can't do that, because that can be discriminatory. If you're, if something's going on where you're going to need a lot of time off, then a doctor's note will be helpful, right? But it doesn't, a doctor's note will not say that and should not have your diagnosis on it. It should basically say, "You're sick," or "When you're going to return to work."
Okay, Kevin, so there's about three more questions. It's up to you if you want to continue with the questions or if you wanted to come back to the questions.
I'm just checking the time here. No, I can do them quickly. Let's do that.
Okay, so Sarah asked, "While we're disclosing an invisible disability in a personal situation, I'm curious about whether you had any motivations related to breaking down stigma and raising visibility when deciding to disclose your ADHD."
Oh, that's a good question. I think, so at this start, right? So you sort of go through a lot of feelings with this, because, and especially because I'm older, right? So first of all, there was relief, because it explained a lot of the things that were going on with me. For example, I can do really complex things quite easily, but ask me to do something simple at home, I'm a total disaster, and I'm not very good at organizing things. So there was relief there that I wasn't doing this to upset people or that, or I couldn't understand why I was so frustrated, why I couldn't do some of these simple things. So that was great. But then there was the frustration and the anger, because it's like, well, why didn't any, why couldn't this have happened 20, 30 years ago? My life could have been very, very different, right? Because I never got accommodated in school or college or anything like that. Not that a lot happened in those days, but you sort of feel a bit cheated, right? But then you sort of get over that, because it's sort of, "Well, I'm supposed to be where I'm supposed to be," and that's okay. And where it comes into play now is like, if I hear people talking, or especially when they don't know the facts, or they're making judgments, then I could say, "By the way, you're not correct." And that's not how, because I can only speak for ADHD, right? And I can say, "That is an incorrect assumption. That is not true. That's a myth." And, you know, no, it's not going to, it's not going to be this way. It could be that way, because at the end of the day, I've been able to build a good life. It hasn't, has it impacted me in some employment? Has, not all positive. I can say that. But on the other side, I can do really, really cool things, and I lead an organization that's dedicated to accessibility. I mean, that's, for me, that's a privilege, right? So it depends on the situation, but I think part of it is getting comfortable with the fact who you are, and that's okay. And no one has the right to look down on you or treat you any differently because of it.
And one last question is from Risa. Are your services geared towards mature adults?
No, we see everyone from the age of 15, and I think our oldest client last year was 70, so for us, it doesn't matter. And in fact, our federal program is actually, half of the clients have to be youth, which, under the federal definition, is anyone from 15 to 29.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
No problem. Sorry, I just need to get some water here. So, and I heard Julia mention some of this earlier, which is about disabilities in Canada. And so the Canadian Survey on Disabilities, and this is every five years. So 2017 was the last one. The next one is in 2022. So it's 22% of the Canadian population had disclosed having one or more disability, which, that's bigger than people would have thought, right? On average, and I mean, if you compare that to the current population, that's over 8 million people across the country, and that's a lot of people. The interesting part of this is how it changes with age. So that figure is smaller when you're younger, yet gets progressively bigger as you get older. And I mean, that's because our bodies get old. Our minds and our bodies don't work the way they do when they're young. So that's, but we tend not to think of that, right? We don't. But that's a reality of who we are as people, and it also means... And it also means as we work and in our careers, we start our careers, you know, early, mid-20s, and we expect that to go until we're 70, right? So our bodies will change over that time. So our, you know, how we can do things is gonna change. And that's something that the, the world of work has to really think about, because not all of, not all employers do. The other figure at the bottom is an interesting one, about the difference between women and men. And it's not because women are more, have more disabilities than men. It's actually because men are less likely to disclose. It's, it's, it's not, it's not a, it's not a factor of biology. It's, it's actually, you know, the, the willingness to say it. And even when we look at that 22%, we know that that's not the case, because there are a lot of people who don't want to disclose. So let's move that down to a little level to Ontario. So do we think, oh, is it higher, is it lower in terms of that average of 22% in Ontario? What does that look like? So in Ontario, it's actually 24.1%. So it's higher than the average. And in 2020, our population is 14.7 million. That's, that was the calculation. And these are based on government statistics. And that means three and a Which we know. Hello? Sorry, did I, am I back? I think I crashed for a minute there.
You're back.
Yes, you're back.
Okay, phew, okay, all right. So don't do this to me now. So we have three and a half million people in Ontario with disabilities, and we know that's an underestimate. So when we think about those figures, what I have at the bottom is because, you know, if you're a person living with a disability, chances are, you've got a fa, you've got family, you've got friends, you've got colleagues. So that, you know, 24% actually becomes 90-something percent, because it impacts people all day, every day, whether you're living with it or you're living with someone who's living with it. So this is not a small thing, and it's not a, you know, it's not, you know, it, it, it doesn't just impact a few people. So disabilities and employment, so let's, you know, and I do apologize, these are a lot of figures, right? And they can be a bit confusing, but what I wanted to do is try to pick some of the key elements out of it. So according to the, and this is Government of Canada again, the total population in the labor force. Now, what we mean by labor, and what the government means by, should I say, is the people who are unemployed, employed, or not in the labor force. And by not in the labor force, they mean people who are unwilling or unable to enter the workforce. So that's what they use to, to calculate. The important part to this is the, is the figures at the bottom. So basically, if you're a person without a disability, the total number of people employed from the workforce is 80%. But if you have a disability, it's 59%. Now, that's sort of, that's a gap, right? And that is a real gap. Now, is it the same for everyone? It's not. So that's, those, that's where statistics can be a bit misleading, because if you have, depending on the, you know, the, the impact of your disability on your life, that, that is not quite the same. So if you're, if you fall into the category of a mild disability, that gap is smaller. And then it increases depending on the, on your disability and how it impacts your life. Having said that, there was some research came out of, of a researcher from Ryerson that basically said that in the province of Ontario, if you have a, you know, if you have a disability and a post-secondary credential, your, your chances of finding work are about the same as someone without a disability and a high school diploma. And I'd like to, I'd love to see more of the details in that, because, you know, I don't think it's quite, quite that, you know, quite like that, but there is a gap, and we know that. And that's part of what we're trying to do, is to close that gap. So this is, so for the, for Canada as a whole, it's 59%. So where are we for Ontario? Well, in Ontario, it's 58.4%. So the gap's even bigger, which is, you know, a little disappointing. But in Quebec, it's even worse. It's 56%. So the gap is even bigger. In B.C., it's 60%. So it's actually, the gap's smaller. So am I going too fast for this? Can I, again, quickly, because this is a lot of, there's a lot of figures here.
I don't hear anything in the chat, so I think it's perfect.
All righty. So the takeaway is that there is a gap in employment if you have a disability across the country. So let's go down even further. So let's look at Peel Region, which is the region we operate in. And these are some big figures here, but so for me, the takeaway is this one, which is the, the potential, the, the unemployed persons with disabilities in Peel Region, around, you know, 8,700. Now, this is where it's interesting, because, you know, my organization is funded under Employment Ontario, or will be for 500 people per year. That's, and now that this, I'm not, we're not the only organization supporting persons with disabilities in employment. But we, we're, we have around 40%. So out of the six organizations in Employment Ontario that support persons with disabilities, it really shows that we're funded for about 1,200. That's well short of the 8,700 demand. So that's, that's, that's a gap, right? And this is, this is pre-COVID. So, you know, this is, you know, that's, this is gonna, the demand's gonna be even higher, which we know, but the government, although they're, you know, they're, they're doing what they can, that, you know, we're not at that point in, in the, in the, I guess, the evolution of, of, of the virus to sort of get to that point where more employment services are going to be needed. The other one is this. So this came from the Ontario Chamber of Commerce, which basically said they surveyed, you know, businesses across Ontario. And most of them said they'd never hired a person with a disability. Now, we can't be, but that's a, that's a, that's an important point, because they obviously don't know. So when people are asking for time off, or to go to doctors, or need to come in late, or all those things that they just do anyway, the flexibility is there, but they just don't know why. But they think, you know, because they don't understand what supporting or accommodating disabilities actually means. So in this, you know, I brought in the, the persons with disabilities statistics, because I wanted to highlight the piece at the bottom, which is just what all the rest of them are saying, right down to the local level, which is that the unemployment rate for persons with disabilities is, is higher than those without. So it's not, you know, it's, it ripples right through the, the, the system. So so this highlights that, you know, according to those categories, what are the major disability types that are seen? And for this, it's, if you look at it, you know, the, the vast majority are, are, you, you would not know, you can't see, and would fall under the, the invisible disabilities definition. Now, how did this work by age? And this is another important one, because you would automatically assume, well, how's that gonna look? You know, people are people, right? And it's always gonna be the same. Well, it's not quite. So first one here is mental health. So if we look at that, what we can see is in youth, mental health is, is the, actually, the, the primary disability type, which then decreases over time. So we have to make sure that when we're thinking about supports for, you know, in the world that, that I operate in, that, you know, that those supports, you take that into account, that we're, we're looking at, mental health is, is, is the primary concern for, for our youth. Likewise, if we go to this other interesting statistic, which is pain-related, which is basically increases with age, because as our bodies get older, they don't work as well. So that also, we need to take into account as well, you know, in terms of the types of jobs that people want to look at. Because while we can accommodate so much, we can, you, there's only so much we can do. And, and, you know, that's a reality. But we want to make sure that we're setting people up for success with the right supports, and also the right type of environment. So that, you know, this information is really important. Any questions on that?
I don't see any questions so far.
Excellent. So then, now we've gone through the types. You know, what, what is an invisible disability anyway? Do we know? Do we not know? Do we think? Are we sure? So this is a, the, I picked this graphic for a number of reasons. But I mean, number one, it highlights that, the differences. But if we look at the symbol, you know, the, the disability symbol, it can be misleading, you know, in today's world as well, because it, it, it shows the wheelchair, which is not what the majority of disabilities are. And, but then it's sort of, people, you know, then sort of think, well, a disability means someone who can't walk or can't see, or can't hear. That's, it's not that, it's not, that's not how the, you know, how people are. So it's interesting that even, you know, how, you know, how things are presented don't fully explain what that means. So then, I took some definitions, one from the Invisible Disabilities Association, and they're based out of the United States, and the Rick Hansen Foundation here are based out of B.C. And I mean, at the end of the day, that, you know, these are about, you know, a disability that, it's not obvious, right? You can't see it. I mean, if you looked at me and met me, you wouldn't really know that I had a disability. Once you got to know me, you probably would. You would, because you would see my, you know, my, you know, my fidgetiness, if you, if you like, or that my brain can't slow down, but you wouldn't know that from meeting me straight away. And that's, that's typical for most people, right? So let's talk about then work. So what are the, you know, what are the challenges with invisible disabilities at work? And, you know, how they operate, how they occur, what happens? And there are two main things that come down to, and, you know, there are disclosure and stigma. And I want to, I know that the speaker after me is gonna focus more on disclosure, so I'm not gonna go too much into that. I'll just sort of give a high-level view. But those, I mean, certainly what we would find in the clients that come to see us every day, these are the primary areas. So the first one, I think it's five, four, yeah, five. So these are some of the common comments that, that come up with regard to disclosure, and why people don't want to do it, and, and, because it's a complex area. And, you know, the, these, you know, and certainly the, a lot of the questions that, that, that were sent to me over the past couple of days were really about disclosure. You know, how to do it, when to do it, whether I should or whether I shouldn't. And, you know, there's a lot of, it really, it depends on the person, it depends on the place, it depends on, there's so many factors in it. But I mean, really, a lot of it is down to, you know, people that experienced the past, they just don't know how to do it. And that's gonna be different as well, because if you work for a small organization, you know, they don't have big HR departments that can help you navigate this world. You know, you're just, basically, it's a small company with maybe 10 people. It's not the same. So you gotta, you have to put a lot of thought into it, how you do it, how you approach it, you know, the knowledge that people have. So it's not an easy thing. And then the other big one is stigma. And these are, there's a very, oops, right? There's a, there's a very famous YouTube video of, you know, what if you, what if you treated, you know, physical illness like mental illness, which sort of highlights how people totally misinterpret or what, you know, what invisible disabilities are, because they just, they don't know, and they make assumptions that just aren't true. And it ends up with the people feeling shame or fear because of what's going on when they really shouldn't at all. I mean, we're different, and that's okay. And other people need to learn so that they know, rather than make rash judgments. And this is a tough one as well, that this is, and, you know, this happens more regularly than we would like, but it does happen to our clients. And that's where we can, you know, that's where we try to help employers before, you know, our, our clients go into this to educate them. You would think that would be great or enough, but sometimes some of our clients still do not want any, you know, any disclosure because of the fear of stigma. So we will, you know, we can't say anything, which means we can't approach that conversation and, and build that knowledge and, you know, the accommodation process as quick as we would like. Sometimes it happens later when things, you know, start to run into, you know, some challenge. But we try to encourage that as much as possible. And at the end of the day, you know, if we're looking at disclosure or, or stigma, you know, would you really want to work for an employer who really had no, you know, who, who wasn't accepting of people who are different? I don't, I don't know if I would. I mean, you know, everyone's different, right? But I think it's, you know, that's part of it as well. It's, you know, why would you want to put yourself in that situation? So solutions. So how do we get around this? Sorry.
Kevin, there is a comment. Oh, there is a comment regarding disclosure. Yeah. Sarah just wanted to add that sometimes a perception that if or when you disclose, you are accepted, expected to be an expert on that disability in your workplace, when you may be just learning about it and negotiating it for yourself. So sometimes what happens is you're uncompensated for the work or other duties and time.
Yep. And I mean, that's part of it, you're, part of this is, you know, when we look at the, you know, it's, it's a partnership, right? So the, the employer should then be going to do their own research, too. It's not just about you being, you know, you're the expert on you, which changes over time. But it's, the employer has a part, a part to play in this as well, about learning what they can, so that they're better prepared to. So I totally agree. It's, it's not one-sided, and it shouldn't be.
And Risa says, "Is there some kind of seal or accreditation that speaks to an organization's set of standards and practices around accessibility issues?"
So, good question, and the answer is sort of. And what I mean by that is, so the, the Rick Hansen Foundation is actually being funded by the Ontario Government at the minute to try to develop something like that, so that they will be able to give that some sort of a credit to companies or organizations that are more accessible, accessibly friendly. So that's sort of, you know, it's happening, but it's not, it's not, it's not at a size or, or point yet where it's sort of an established certification that you would see for other things. So it's, it's in, it's in process.
Okay, so that's it for questions. Oh, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
She said, "Thank you."
Oh, no problem. You're welcome. Okay, so let's move on to solutions. So I don't wanna, I don't want it to make everyone think, "Oh, my God, this is terrible." It's not. I mean, we, you know, we do this every day, and this is, we do good stuff. So I don't want people to get disheartened by what I'm saying. I'm just trying to sort of set the context. So these are sort of the, the areas that we look for in solutions for disabilities in the workplace. And I've built, I've put them in that order, sort of starting from the core and working on it, right? So the first one is legislation. So these are, oops, went too far. The, these are the pieces of legislation that really sort of impact us in Canada, or in, in Ontario. So starting at the federal level, you know, we have a Canadian Human Rights Act. But really, it covers federally, federal regulation, things like banking and, you know, the airline industry, that sort of stuff. Last year, the Accessible Canada Act was passed, which once again, you, is good, but people didn't, you know, it didn't go far enough, because it sort of made it a little, a little less impact. And that, once again, just covers federally regulated programs and services. It does not cover all of Canada. So here in, in Ontario, we have the Ontario Human Rights Code. And then we have AODA. Now, that's, so AODA was passed in 2005, and And full implementation will be January 1st, 2025. It 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 covers all organizations, public, private, not for profit, everyone. Everyone has to comply with A O D A. And, you know, that took 20 years to get fully implemented. And it can be a bit confusing too, because the rules are slightly different depending on the size of organization. But everyone has to comply, which is the important part. We are, I guess, you know, in Ontario, we we sort of were the leaders in this. There's the only other places that have accessibility legislation are Manitoba and Nova Scotia, Nova Scotia, and they like Manitoba was 2013, Nova Scotia was 2017. And then B C and Newfoundland are, you know, sort of in the process, but A O D A is, you know, we're sort of leading on that. I mean, although legislation is good, it's you can't legislate your way out of everything. And because really, it's about, it's about knowledge and behavior. And a good example is what's happening with COVID-19. I mean, we have legislation in place to try to get people to do the right thing, yet, you know, we had a $40,000 worth of fines for a party in Mississauga last weekend. Legislation only goes so far. It's really, it's about, you know, how people, you know, learn and grow. So that moves us on to the next part, which is accommodation, which is, what are you dealing with certain things in the workplace in a certain way? And that's the most common way that we work with in in the workplace at this point in time. What I've done is I have put together some common workplace accommodations for different types of invisible disabilities. They're not the, you know, this is not a complete list by any stretch of the imagination, because it depends on the person, right? These are just some examples of some of the things that can be done to address some of the areas that the people may need. So and a lot of these overlap as well. That's, that's the thing. They, you know, and they're not that complicated to do. There's also, you know, there's a misinterpretation that, you know, when you have to provide accommodations and it's going to cost a fortune, which it's not most of the case. Over 80% of accommodations are less than $500 and they really involve flexibility. And so they can be done and they're already being done. You just don't know it. So if we look at that, the list, you know, there's lots of things that that fit within current workplace environments anyway. And really assistive technology between our phones and our tablets and our computers, we have so much accessible functionality in there that we don't even know. But it's built into the computers. They just, they don't make, do a really great job of telling people about it. And there's lots of apps out there that are free where you can help people with limitations, because I mean, I use, you know, my phone is my lifeline in terms of reminders and tasks and stuff like that, which I would have had to write down and I'm terrible with paper. So, you know, it was awful, you know, I would lose things all, you know, all over the place, whereas it's all in my phone now, which connects to my computer. So it helps my work environment and and that's, you know, that makes things a lot easier. So the other thing, the one thing I wanted to mention in autism as well is you the our recruitment practices across the board and not just autism, you know, we use a this, you know, it's almost like a game, right? Where, you know, you submit your application, you have an interview. Everyone Googles the interview question, so it's all very, it's very staged. It's not real. But for some disabilities, you know, the having to sit there for an hour to an hour and a half in in this environment, it's, it's, it's terrible. And it's not, it's not a good way to assess someone's ability to do a job. And I mean, really, the interview, that traditional interview process doesn't have a really good success rate in terms of finding the best people. So for recruitment, we have to find a better way to do it and a more inclusive way to do it, because we also, you know, we, you know, we will post notes in in shop, you know, shop notice boards to signify, you know, there's a vacancy. Well, if you don't get out a lot or you've, your mobility is not there or you're, you know, you've got low vision, you're not going to, you're not going to know about it. So you're indirectly discriminating. So recruitment is a big thing that we have to look at. And it is changing, but slowly. So moving on to ADHD, there's some crossover with with autism. I mean, assistive technology will run through this. Alternative communication is a big one. I mean, for me, that's a really big one, because I'm a very literal thinker. If you, if you tell me something, I will interpret that literally, even if you meant something else. So for me, I like, people have to tell me something in a couple of different ways to make sure I understand it. Or I will ask them, or I will repeat it back, because if I don't, I make, I make it, I make it the wrong thing and go do the wrong thing. But those are important in terms of communication. They would help anyone, not to, you know, it doesn't matter if you have a disability or not. So then we have auditory processing. So there's some crossover from the previous. Depression. And here we also, you there's some stuff in here, you know, that wouldn't be present in the others in terms of emotions. That because you want to make sure that someone has the support they have, so that if they do have an episode that they can, you know, that they have the support to get them through it and manage it. Anxiety. Similar again, on, there's also environmental stuff in these two, because, you know, people, some people need different, some people like a lighter, darker, and you know, even within the Human Rights Code now, if you've got a scent allergy, chemical sensitivity, that's, that's now part of the Human Rights Code. That's a recognized disability. So you, people have to be aware of that and be respectful of that. And addiction. Addiction is another issue that you tends to get stigmatized, but it's, 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 it's real and it's a disability and people need support with it. And cognitive disability. And as I mentioned before, these are all on the slides, so you don't have to, you know, don't have to worry about trying to remember them all. So any questions on those? I realize I better speed up because it's 12:30 already. I didn't realize the time.
There wasn't any question on those, but there was one back with with legislation. You may have answered it. Is it true that A O D A is only fully implemented in 2021?
2025, January 1st.
And that's it for the chat.
Okay, so moving up a level from, you know, we've started with legislation, then we have accommodation. Accommodations are designed to sort of meet the needs of the individual, but maybe we should look a bit further. So this is where accessibility comes in, which is, let's look at things, design things that are, that means it really doesn't matter what your disability is, it will cover everything. So I don't know if people are familiar with that. This, this is actually the Microsoft Adaptive Controller for the Xbox. And what it does is for people with different levels of functional limitations, you can plug different things into it so that you're not having to be forced to use this one type of, you know, hand controller that that doesn't work for everyone. So Mike, you know, Microsoft did this after, you know, because people were with this sort of stuff and plugging it into the the equipment. So they they built one that actually that helps do this and and work with the Xbox better. And I've actually spoken to Microsoft and they're actually working on a way to adapt that for office environments so that you could use that adaptive controller instead of having to use a trackpad or a mouse or or you could plug in different types of assistive technologies such as voice controllers, eye trackers, so that it could all run in a seamless environment. So this is from Rick Hansen, and this is an accessible office. So, you know, you can't see, you don't know, but I'm actually at a sit-stand station that I can, and I'm at home, but you, I can move it up and down. I have a chair that goes up and down. That because that means people can build, you know, you can modify the work environment to work for you so that you're not forced to sit behind a desk that whether that really isn't designed for you as an individual. And the other one here is is a door controller. So these are, you'll see these in your buildings and hospitals. So you actually don't have to press a button anymore. You we have something in front of it. It's not totally accessible, because if you can't move your hands very well, you still can't open the door, right? It's better than trying to try to, you know, physically open a door. The next piece is universal design. Now, universal design is sort of like the next piece up under, you know, these are the seven principles. And what it basically means is if we, and the difference between accessibility and universal design is that where accessibility really has a disability focus, universal design means it doesn't matter who you are or, you know, you know, what you can or can't do, the system will work for you. And some quick examples, I mean, there's a universal design all around us. We just don't notice it. One would be our light switches on the wall. So now they're flat panels. In the old days, there used to be little switches you had to toggle. So they're neither flat panels, which means it's easier to open. The curb cuts, so the sloping curbs with the with the anti-slip bumps. Those, those are examples of universal design. Our volume controls on your headphones or your TV, those, those are universal design. So there's lots of things out there. But we're and we're not where we need to be. So that, you know, it really, you can go and do anything and it really doesn't matter what your human condition is. But that's would be, you know, for us, for the workplace and getting people into work, this is, you know, this is what we would really love to see that, you know, it doesn't matter. So some myths very quickly. So there's a lot of myths out there about about disabilities in the workplace. And, you know, this, these examples come from the Ontario Chamber of Commerce, based on research they did. So persons with disabilities are less reliable and the workplace, not true. So we're actually, people with disabilities are more reliable. Another one, less loyal. That's a myth too, so that, you know, persons with disabilities have a higher retention rate compared to persons without disabilities. Less productive in the workplace, that's false as well. So vast majority of persons with disabilities are actually very productive and successful. And the other one, and this, this one, I I hear a lot and I do not like it. That, you know, well, you can't have a person with a disability because that's a safety risk. That's actually totally, totally false. And, you know, one of, one of the success stories we have from our organization is is a forklift truck driver for a big organization and he's deaf and he communicates through A S L. He's been doing this for over a decade. He's safer than the, you know, he's safer than the, the his colleagues without disabilities. And he also, he's also an Uber driver. So you, people tend to think, you know, okay, because you, because of this, you can't do that. That's not necessarily true. So tips for success. One, disclosure. That's a tough one, but it's important because when you do it, then your employer will understand. They will, you know, there'll be an education process. You will have an accommodation plan that will enable you to be successful. So if something happens, there's an explanation for it and and you will get the support. Knowledge, that's a big one too. I mean, disabilities or understand them or understand them at home or at work. And that's important to know, so that people can say, ah, that makes sense, not, you know, the, you know, the, it, it, it goes a long way. Accommodation plan, everyone should have one. Everyone should have one, because that will be the plan that helps you be successful and level the playing field. I mean, when you, can you imagine having your your accommodation plans for your school apply in the workplace? There's no reason why they can't. And it will help things work better, right? Especially, you know, if you're looking, if you're doing a project work, for example, and you know, it takes you a little more time. If it's built into your accommodation plan, then your timelines are better aligned and and then people, you know, people will be more successful. Clear expectations. So, you know, if you're clear on what you can do and what you need, and your employer is clear on what they need and what they can do, then that makes life an awful lot easier, so that you can actually figure out how to do things together. And you understand what's expected. Open communication, that's, that's big. I mean, if you don't tell anyone or they, you know, then how will people know? They won't. And then people will make assumptions, which were, which may not be true. And the last one is regular feedback. I mean, in any good organization, you know, performance management should be not a once a year meeting. It should be regular and it should be based on how to, how to correct things or how to make sure things don't happen again. It should punitive process, it should be an improvement process. And that as part of a, you know, someone with a disability, that's important, because you, you know, we don't, you know, we don't know what we don't know. And that applies to anyone in any situation. The more we know, then we can do things, whether that be to fix a mistake or to do things better, right? So and these are very, very simple things to help, you know, it doesn't need to be complicated. So will invisibility, was, will an invisible disability stop my goals? And I wanted to give you some examples of why not. So this is Dan Aykroyd, a very famous Canadian actor. He's, he's on the autism spectrum. Little wean, very famous rapper. He's got epilepsy. Halle Berry, very famous Hollywood actress. She's diabetic. And Tom Cruise. Dyslexic. Some more examples. Rana Degubati, very famous Bollywood actor, producer, vision loss. Chris Rock, non-verbal learning disability. Ryan Gosling, ADHD. And Richard Branson, who's runs the Virgin Group, who've done all sorts of stuff all over the years, but currently trying to send people into space. ADHD and dyslexia. So the invisible disability should not define you. And I know that's easy to say, but it really shouldn't. I mean, if you really want to do something, you know, just go and do it. So a check back. Did we do some stuff on disabilities in employment? I think we did. What invisibilities are and challenges and solutions of invisible disabilities in the workplace. I think I've covered everything. If not, let me know. I also wanted to finish off with a quote, and this is a very old quote, but I sort, I like it, because it's sort of, you know, it sort of makes sense. And, you know, it basically says that the bumblebee should not be able to fly, but it doesn't know that, so it does it anyway. And for me, that's, you know, that's really good, because it shows that you, you do your limitations, you know, you know, we look at disabilities as a limitation when it's not, it's just different. We, it's a different way to live and experience life, and that's the way we should focus on it and not have medical definitions that tell us what we're, 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 what we lack or are deficient in, because it really doesn't tell us the story about who we are. So big thank you to everyone. I hope I haven't, I hope I have kept you awake during your lunchtime. And if you have any questions, you know, please feel free to ask. And there's our website address and a Q R code to scan for, to get us to our website as well. Any questions?
There is a couple, about three in the chat. Risa asks, do you advise that we combine disclosure with education as in informing our potential employers using some of the statistics we've seen and other information sources?
Uh, that's, it's, it sort of depends, right? It depends on the employer, I mean, and how you do it. So if you're applying for a job, you don't tell them you've got a, you don't disclose anything unless you you want to through their H R department. If, you know, when you sort of, you know, when you get into the, you get the job and you get in there, you know, that's, that's part of the discussions, right? And then with disclosure about, and really, it should also focus on the limitations. It should, you know, the diagnosis should really not be coming to it. I mean, it does inevitably at some point, but, you know, the driver of the conversation should really be supporting what you need when, when, you know, in terms of you addressing the, because at the end of the day, disability is not about a person, it's about the environment. The environment isn't set up to to be conducive to that person. It's, you know, it's not that there's anything wrong with the person. So part of that can be, you know, an ongoing discussion, but, you know, but there's also the, the employer has a responsibility to, that, you know, it's a partnership. They have to learn, you know, you have to learn and learn together. It's, you know, they should, they should know more than they do, but they don't. And I mean, that's why organizations like, you know, ours exists, because we're not where we should be. In an ideal world, you know, my organization, I would be out of a job, right? But that's not the way it works right now. But that's not the way it works right now, so. I know that's sort of not a clear answer, but it's not a, this really depends on the situation.
Okay, Casey has a comment and a question. My previous employer, they denied my accommodation stating, those are personal preferences, not accommodations. And then they proceeded to claim undue hardship. And this was for a very simple accommodation. So the question she asked is, how do I advocate for myself and ensure that this does not happen again without having to go to the Human Rights Tribunal? Because her prep session with arch disability law did not help.
So here's the thing, so personal preference, I mean, it would be hard to, to know that without knowing any details, which I don't want you to go through in this venue. But really where it comes down to is if, if it's, if the accommodation is necessary and directly related to your, your disability and your ability to support you in your job, that's not a personal preference. That's an accommodation. Now, do they have to do every accommodation? No, it, it, there has to be a balance, right? It has to be what's realistic. Where undue hardship comes into it, that's a very hard bar to meet, not under the law. What it basically means is that you, by doing that for you, they would go broke. And that's, you know, that doesn't happen because the vast majority of accommodations are very simple and very cheap and easy to do. So they, you know, depending on what it was, it's, you know, it would be very unlikely that that would be something they could actually claim. And they would have to prove that, that's the thing, they, you don't have to prove it, they do. They have to prove why accommodating you would cause undue hardship. And I mean, there are times when, when you have to go to the commission to get clarity because sometimes you don't know, or it's a situation where you're not sure. Well, the commissioner there to actually help you through that.
Okay. There was someone to know, who is the point of contact at Abilities to Work?
Okay, so we have, you know, if you go to the website, that'll direct you to sort of get you into the, the organization. You can go to info@disabilityaccess.org, that's an email. You can sort of make contact or intake@disabilityaccess.org. But if you started the website, that's, that's, that will get you to the, the team.
And there was a question, I think you answered it, but who is the best person to tell when you yourself recognize where and how you're struggling within place?
So it would depend on your organization once again, because for a big organization, you would go to HR, right? Because they, they tend to have a knowledge of this sort of stuff. Not always, but most of the time they'll have some knowledge and they would help you navigate that process. If you're in a small organization, it would be your supervisor or, or someone not directly related to your day-to-day supervision. Someone who you think that would have the knowledge that, or the ability to help you. But it's important to do that because you don't want to be, you don't want to be disciplined or fired for something that, that's part of you, right? And, and if they don't know, they, they may do that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kevin, for, for your time today. Lots of different things are, I've taken away. I mean, you, you really wonderfully set the landscape with some statistics and, and myths about employees with disabilities. You know, you mentioned something about it's not so much the diagnosis that matters. It's more or less the, you know, the functional impact of a disability in a workplace setting or in a personal setting. And you ended off with lots of tips for success. And, and a lot of it starts from the self-awareness, being clear on who you are, what your expectations are, what you feel need and communicate that carefully and honestly and strategically in the workplace amongst many other takeaways. So thank you very much for, for committing to this event and for answering all of the questions. I'm just going to share my slide now, just to wrap things up before our break. Okay, so thank you again.
Oh, no trouble. Thanks, thanks for having me. It's a pleasure.
It is always a pleasure. Okay, so just bear with us, everyone, while we're, we're closing things off for, for this part. Okay, so this was our second webinar today. And if you just joined us for this webinar, you know, I, I want to mention that you can, and you stay till the end. You can, if you're a Humbert student or a Guelph Humbert student, you can add this attendance on your co-curricular record. You will, you can claim, you have to watch the, the event in its entirety to do that. In the chat box, there'll be a link where you can put your name and student number. And then again, questions about the CCR, what it is, how it works, how to access it, et cetera. The email address is here. You can send an email to cr@humbert.ca. And again, about the survey, if you've attended just this one webinar or attended the morning one and this one and don't plan to attend our third webinar, if you're ending the event today, please take a few moments to put your, your feedback on our online survey. Again, as I mentioned a couple of times before, you know, we respond to feedback very actively. We use this to inform future offerings of events of this nature. So the link for the survey will be listed in. You could also go to the URL code stated here, or you can scan the QR code on the screen right now, which will open up to the survey. If you do plan to attend our final session of the day, you don't have to do the survey at the stage, you can wait until the end. So that's entirely up to you. So again, just check the chat or scan this code. And lastly, coming up next at 1:30 PM is our third and final webinar on disclosing invisible disabilities in the workplace. That will occur from 1:30 until 2:45. At 2:45, we'll spend about 20 minutes, half an hour wrapping up the event for the day. You can check out our Transition to Work website for the meeting link for that third webinar. This site will also be posted in the chat box, so keep an eye out for that. I'll leave the screen on for about 10 more seconds and then we will break and resume again at 1:30. Thank you again for everybody, for your engagement, for your questions and for your attention and thinking during this webinar. Bye for now.